My name is Michael Popa. I'm Executive Director of Mainstream Coalition. And thank you for joining the third of five Johnson County primary candidate forums, co-sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Johnson County, ACLU of Kansas, Advocacy and Awareness Group of Johnson County, the Mid-America LGBT Chamber of Commerce, and Mainstream Coalition. Tonight, we will hear from candidates running for Lenexa City Council. Please note that all 10 candidates on the August ballot for this race were invited to participate. Before we begin, I'll go over a few housekeeping items. We'll also throw the link to the guidelines in the chat. And so I'll just go over the highlights. Each question will be asked to all candidates. Candidates will then have two minutes to answer each question. Time permitting, each candidate will have one minute for closing remarks. And the remaining time for each candidate will be on screen. We're going to try this on screen for the very first time. If that doesn't work, we're going to do a countdown in the chats. We are offering a third-party closed caption service. And if you don't see that right now, if you don't see the closed captions, just click the CC button at the bottom of your screen. All right, and for the questions from the audience, if you use a Q and A function, that Q and A feature at the bottom of your screen, it should be right next to the CC. The partner organizations co-sponsoring the forum believe that democracy works best when citizens are engaged and informed. So thank you for taking time to learn about these candidates and the important issues that surrounding these races. Now, I'd like to welcome our moderator, Eileen Burquist, with the ACLU of Kansas.
Thank you so much, Michael, and good evening, everyone. It is a pleasure to be here with you tonight. Thank you to the event organizers and especially to the folks in the audience. Thank you for being so engaged in your community. I will start by introducing our candidates, so you can get to know their faces, starting with Melanie Arroyo from Ward Three. Hofin Bosinde from Ward Four. Scott Callaway, Ward Four. Craig Denny, Ward Four. And Corey Hunt, Ward Three. There we are. So we will start out alphabetically by last name. So I will just dive in with our first question. What do you see as the most pressing civil rights issues at today? And how do you think civil rights and liberties issues should be addressed by the city council? We'll start with you, Melanie.
Thanks, Eileen. When it comes to civil rights issues, this is definitely one of the issues that is very close to my heart for many reasons, particularly as having a background as a professional counselor and having met people from all walks of life. I've understood that the way that communities embrace diversity also contributes to the mental health of all of our neighbors. For the way for city council to address diversity, most recently, we had the a couple of years ago, we had a non-discrimination ordinance for the LGBT community that thankfully was passed by the city of Lenexa. And that was definitely a very proud Lenexa moment for me. Moving forward, oh, yeah, and before I forget, last year during the height of the George Floyd protests, there was an equity statement that fell short. So I hope that there is an opportunity in the future for us to look it over and maybe make some revisions, because I feel that we can do better. Other issues that we have coming up in the near future might be challenging any form of conversion therapies in our communities. This was recently a conversation in Blue Springs, Missouri, and I would welcome the conversation in Lenexa, so that we can bring an end to this type of practice.
Thank you, Melanie. Next, Hofin. It looks like there's still some issue with audio. Right, we will skip for now, but definitely come back when you have a chance to reconnect. We will go to Scott, who may also have lost connection. All right, so let's go to Craig Denny. Craig, you'll need to unmute yourself.
Okay, there we go. I think I'm unmuted now, is that correct?
Correct.
All right. So the question is civil rights. Certainly, the city of Lenexa has been, I think, proactive. I support Lenexa's position on equity and diversity, which was approved in last year in August of 2020. It reads in part, "As elected leaders who represent citizens of the city, we're dedicated to serving all who live, work, visit, play in Lenexa. We reject racism and oppression and believe that everyone should be treated with dignity and respect." And I think that certainly exemplifies my feelings personally and my position if elected to the council.
Thank you, Craig. Corey?
Hello, thank you, Eileen. Is my audio okay?
You're great, loud and clear.
Great, great. I too support diversity. You may know, I did vote for the NDO that was passed by Lenexa Council and was proud to do so. Proud Lenexan for it. I think there's many things that we can do and that we're doing. I, like Craig, think that we're a leader in this area with much to do, but I think we should be building places where peers can gather and express themselves culturally. And we've done that in city center. Create green spaces like the City Green Area that is downtown Lenexa, where people can get together and express their views in a great way and build community. I support I support the conversation that that discrimination is real and that we should have those public conversations like our police chief does. I would say regularly with the community, these are all healthy things that Lenexa does. And then there's room to do more, for sure. But I think we're on a great path. My background is retired US Navy. I've led men and women of all different backgrounds in maritime and in combat. And I do understand the struggles that we have, and I know that there's injustices every day. Discrimination is real, but we're having those conversations and we're making space in Lenexa for it. And I'm proud Lenexan for it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Corey. And it looks like Hofin was able to jump on a different device. I wasn't sure if you heard the question, because you were having issues. So I'll restate that for you and Scott as well. The question is, what do you see as the most pressing civil rights issues impacting Lenexa today? And how do you think civil rights and liberties issues should be addressed by the city council? Hofin? You're on mute. We can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Yes, it's my belief that the city should handle the diversity problem, because everybody has a right to make Lenexa or feel safe without any form of discrimination. And this has to do with, if it's the police, I think it's their role to make sure that at least they treat everybody with equity and in a way that everybody feels not a victim. Personally, if I go to the city, I'll add that voice. And I'll be, I don't want to be a victim, but I want to respect the rule of law, so that at least once unstopped or anything happens, I don't feel I'm a victim. I feel that the police, they are doing their right and they are following the law. So if I go to the council, I think I'll add that voice in a way that if the police, they have to follow the rules. If anybody's doing a mistake, they have to be trained so that they treat everybody equally.
Thank you so much. And Scott, take it away. Looks like there are some issues with audio.
Oh, I'm good, sorry. I don't know why I did this screen. I have some trouble. And I have my kids on this evening, apologize, I'm using my time. The most pressing civil rights issues, I would say, well, as probably has been mentioned before, I got disconnected with my son who was cutting the table, so I didn't hear what he had said, which is fine. But it seems like the most pressing civil rights issues that we're hearing about would probably allude to police brutality and lack of good police training to ensure that police officers are using moderate force and not excessive force when they are apprehending suspects. I would add, though, that I'm very pro-law enforcement. I have friends who are police officers, and they've told me the same thing, that sometimes they have bad police officers that are on the force, and it needs to be taken care of internal, but they don't always do that. So training and oversight for the police departments, I don't want to see it federalized, but I do believe that the city's police departments do have responsibility to ensure that we are properly trained officers to just use the correct adequate level of force to apprehend suspects. That's basically it. And beyond that, I would say, oh, I'm sorry, what was the second part of your question? I have my children, I'm sorry.
Don't apologize, it's understandable. How do you think civil rights and liberties issues should be addressed by the city council?
Well, that's a hard question. I believe that everything that comes to the city council should be addressed. And if there are civil rights issues, then the city council needs to listen to the public, the residents, and discuss and take adequate action. Certainly, I believe in diversity and culture. I live in a, I'm very fortunate my whole life, but even currently right now, I've been a Lenex resident for 15 years, and I live in a very diverse neighborhood, and it's wonderful. And we never even think about sexual orientation or color. We have multiracial families, we have different diversity families, I think, from every culture just about. So we're very fortunate, and we all get along great. So I think if issues are brought up to the city council, then they should address them in a fair approach.
Any seconds?
That's fine, I'm good. But I would just say that the city council does play a role in addressing these issues. They should listen to the public when it comes to them and really listen, discuss, and respond in a timely manner.
Thank you. So for our next question. Participation in primary elections is dismally low. What are you doing to convince residents of the importance of good governance at the local level? Let's start with Hofin.
I think if usually elections like these, the turnout is low, because they have local issues. The thing that can be able to encourage a large turnout in terms of this is to include things like border issues, which can add a lot into some issues that people will feel they actively or they actively want to participate in. So it's my idea that if the council can include issues like those in local elections, you have a larger number of people to participate.
Thank you. Let's go to Craig.
Can you repeat the question for me?
Absolutely. The question is, participation in primary elections is dismally low. What are you doing to convince residents of the importance of good governance at the local level?
Well, what I'm doing personally is going door to door and talking to voters. Primary elections fall in August. There are competing events like softball games and getting back to school activities and all those things. And I think residents want to get that last vacation at the lake in. So continuing conversations with our residents in our neighborhoods about the importance of primary election is it's my way of helping them understand the importance of their voice and their vote.
Thank you. Corey?
Absolutely, I think it's all of the above, what's been mentioned. This is, and what do I know, this is my first primary. So I think personally for me, I'm out hitting the streets. I actually enjoy doing it, learning about the neighborhoods. It's amazing what you learn. I know all of the panelists feel the same way. And talking to voters and making sure they understand as much as possible how important it is to be a part of that democracy. And we talk about local government is the closest to the residents. We really, at the end of the day, sometimes it's, there's a weight to it. And I've felt it. And it's, sometimes it's a load, and you want to carry it right for the people that you represent. And it, you know, you try to talk to people to become informed and make sure they understand where you fit into what's going on. So I got into this thing actually because of communication, communicating to residents and trying to affect good change in their lives and making sure they're getting the benefits that they deserve. And I've found that communicating effectively is the most difficult part of it. And it's no surprise to you, I'm sure. But still, we try to do it, and that's the game during the primary.
Melanie?
My number one way to get voters to turn out for the primary has been knocking on doors and letting them know first thing when they open the doors. Hey, I'm Melanie, I just want to let you know, we have a primary coming up. And most people will say, I had no idea. And I'm like, well, that's why I'm here. So we talk about the upcoming date, and then we talk about making a plan so that they can get to vote either by mail or by in person. If they need any resources to see if they're registered or what all they may be missing, I supply them with the necessary links online, so that they can get more information. Other things that I do is that I engage them in a conversation about the issues that are important to them. I think that the moment that they feel that they're being listened to and that those issues matter, they're going to feel more compelled to come to show up to primaries. And I also let them know to follow me on social media. I think it's important for us candidates to have a presence online, so that we can keep that information available to voters whenever they need to retrieve information.
All right. Scott?
I am doing kind of sort of the same thing everybody else is doing. I don't knock as many doors, but as I am driving around the neighborhood from work or pick up the children, if I see neighbors that are outside working, doing something, I will stop and say hi, and explain to them what I'm doing and running. I'm not a big fan of people knocking on my door. I live through homes or castles, so it's not that I can't do it. I've been an environmentalist and done a lot of door knocking in the past, but these days I don't door knock. So what I've been doing is speaking to neighbors and residents about any concerns and issues they have. And it's really interesting, actually, they have some concerns about things that I had no idea, because it didn't affect me, but I'm a good listener, and I retain the information. I always try to get back with them to find out the results. And it doesn't always work out in a positive way, but I'm honest with them. And I let them know what's going on, and these are the reasons why. And I encourage everyone to get more involved in politics, attending planning commission meetings, the city council meetings, find out what's going on in your city. And if you're not happy with the approach that city leaders are taking, then you do need to show up and vote. And so I've been also working on ways to provide that information to our residents and work for, to ensure they know the date and time and location that they can show up and vote, and encourage them, of course, to vote for me.
All right. Next question. You may or may not be aware that Lenexa is one of the leading Kansas municipalities to engage in automatic license plate reader programs. These programs can lead to the erosion of civil liberties and civil rights. How do you intend to stand up for residents' civil liberties? And we will start with Scott.
Perfect. I'm against that. I think it's, I understand the reason why police would love to have that utility. I think there are some good reasons for safety to have it, but it does infringe on civil liberties. And I feel like that takes us down a path that I don't think most people want to go down. And we have drones flying around, taking facial recognition scans of people, and just, oh, this person meets a match, and let's go find them, arrest them. And we found that facial recognition is not actually 100% sometimes, even in the recent history. With January 6th, they accidentally arrested the wrong people and sort of harassed them, because their face facial recognition software matched them close enough. So we need to be careful with it. Technology is moving so fast right now. But beyond that, as far as license plate identification using computers, I was even a fan of the red light cameras. My wife got a ticket in St. Louis, and it was somebody else driving. But then, you know, it wasn't her fault, but it is what it is. So I'm not a fan of it.
Craig?
You know, I think technology is something that can be a good news or bad news thing. If you're talking about license plate readers, that speeds up the process for what an officer would otherwise be looking at a hot sheet and comparing the plate. So I don't really have a problem with the readers. I think they've been shown to be of value to our police department and to our citizens. So I'm supportive of the technology. I don't agree, I think, with facial recognition, taking it beyond that. But if you're reading a plate more quickly than an officer could read it and compare it to a sheet, I don't see a big difference.
Hofin?
Well, I think sometimes technology can make errors in judgment. And you can find, you know, that sometimes you're a victim and you are not supposed. So I personally feel that as smart as we can advance in the use of the modern devices to identify or to the licensing, I'm opposed to that. I believe that people, they much invade on people's privacy. So I think I'm not much as smart as we want to develop or make the work of the police easy to do that on their regular. I'm opposed to that.
Corey?
Yeah, thanks for the question. There's a few layers to this. I am not opposed to reading license plates. And as far as I know, I think as a city, Lenexa has gotten pretty good with that for a couple of reasons. And I'll drill down on that here in a second. But to the facial recognition point, I agree with some panelists here. I'm not, I don't believe we've gotten to that point in Lenexa. I think there are some issues there with, certainly with the Fourth Amendment, and I would agree with some panelists there on that. As far as license plate readers, you may not know, 87th and Quavira is one of the most volumous intersections in all of the metro. And it directly comes in and out of here. If you could understand how many stolen cars go through that intersection in a day, period, just between eight in the morning and five o'clock in the afternoon, you would be astonished. And one of the reasons why we rely on that technology is because we have a hard time recruiting and retaining police officers. And it's very troublesome. And when that happens, and say, we're down a few officers in patrol, having those readers is critical. It protects our officers, it protects our residents, believe it or not. These people are people that have, in most cases, warrants for something greater than a stolen car. And there are statistics to back that up. So these are very important things that we have in our city that tie into other things as well, as far as EMS. So if you didn't have the readers and the cameras doing that, you wouldn't have them protecting citizens in other ways either for public safety. So in my mind, I think it's a great investment in Lenexa that we have in public safety. And for me, that's a number one issue. Thank you.
Melanie?
I agree with some opinions on here about how useful these can be to the police department. And I also agree with opinions on the fact that this can be an invasion of privacy for folks. I know that for some of friends and family members who are people of color or are in marginalized, from marginalized communities, they can help with to feel targeted, just because maybe they have a background where they had multiple accidents, or maybe they were driving without a license or whatever the reason is. While these are important laws to abide by, sometimes people just want to be able to drive without feeling the added stress of being targeted. And sometimes they'll avoid places like Lenexa, because they don't feel safe driving here, because they don't know how one thing, accusation of, hey, you took a left, why turn? Or like, we're kind of targeting you, because, well, obviously, that's never said explicitly. I guess what I'm trying to go with that is that I understand the work that it does for the Lenexa Police Department and, you know, in cases of car robberies, that would be very valuable. But then there are, for other individuals who they feel very much targeted by such resources. I feel like we should have a limitation on in what kind of cases the police department are allowed to use those technology features.
All right. Next question. How can the city of Lenexa improve the situation for our homeless and displaced population? How should the city of Lenexa work on Project 1020? We'll start with Corey.
You would start with me on this. This is a topic that I've evolved greatly on. When this first came around, I was not happy with 1020. I'm not happy with the position they put the city in, you know, and no need to go into the background. But it costs taxpayers. And we've gotten to a point where I'm very compassionate. I'm personally invested in the homeless issue. And there's a number of reasons. I actually, I actually help veterans in that way every day. And so I understand a little bit about the homeless situation, the gaps in services, and how complex it is to solve this issue. And Lenexa is not going to solve it. I mean, we're trying, and I'm proud to have done what we've done. And for the record, I did vote to change our ordinances to allow a type of homeless shelter that 1020 is operating. And I tell you what, they do an amazing job. They really do. We can do more, and we're doing more. Other cities around us are making it so that these types of shelters can't exist. We've said no to that, and we're going to do more. It takes a little bit of time. I'd like to see more support area-wide from Johnson County and the state. This is actually not a metro issue. It's a, you know, it's a regional, national issue. And it's not vagrants that are necessarily homeless. It's real people that have jobs that just don't have a place to stay, and we don't want them to freeze to death in the wintertime or burn up in the summertime. And for every homeless person you see, there's probably two more spending the night on a friend's couch or in a basement someplace and not knowing where they're going to go tomorrow night. So I think we're doing what we need to do. I think there's still work to do. And I think Lenexa is leading in this area.
Scott?
This is definitely a difficult question. You know, like what Corey said, I'm compassionate. I have friends who, from all walks of life, I have friends who are homeless people that I work downtown sometimes, and not friends, but were friendly. And I know them, and they're nice people, and I've been homeless most of my life, actually. So I understand the situations. With regards to Lenexa. you know, there is, there's one homeless shelter I'm aware of that the local shopkeepers complained to me about. You know, especially night before they even talked to me about running for office, they were complaining about these issues. They've had to change the way they operate. And at the same time, you know, if, if the homeless that are staying there have nothing to do during the day, they're walking around our neighborhoods. So Lenexa can play a role. What I'd like to see, you know, more of is affordable housing in Lenexa. So that people who need, you know, housing choice vouchers and things like that. And otherwise, you know, opportunities for, there's even to rent out rooms or things, you know, that I think the city is, I talked about Yocum about the city manager. And she said that that was one option they're looking at, trying to be creative is allow zoning for homeowners to expand. Sort of like so they could have rental agreements with, with low income people to stay there, probably family members primarily, but they could do it. But beyond that, I really don't want to see more homeless shelters pop up. You know, especially in Ward 4, East of 435. I think Lenexa is doing its part, but if we're bringing in homeless to stay here, I don't think that's a good idea. If there are people that in Lenexa who suddenly find themselves homeless, I'm compassionate to that. And I'd like to see them taken care of and look at creative approaches to meet that need. But I don't think we need to grow more homeless shelters in Lenexa. I don't think it's a good idea for prosperity and growth and families that live here. But we're all compassionate. We're human beings, we love everyone and we try to help them. So it's a tough question, but I don't think we can solve it in Lenexa. Okay.
Craig.
You know, I think it's a difficult issue. It's not just Lenexa's issue. It's, as has been said, region, nationwide issue. I applaud Lenexa's approach. I think that finding a way within our existing codes to allow for a homeless shelter with restrictions with enforcement, I think that was a good thing to do. I, I think transportation plays a role. How do the homeless get to a place to work if they do work? It's been my observation that in many cases homeless choose to be homeless. It's not a function necessarily of them not being able to find an affordable place to live. They just choose to be homeless. That's, that's a societal issue. We're not the ones to solve it entirely, but we are a city that collaborates and finds solutions elsewhere. So I support the city's approach. And I would be collaborative with other cities and county and finding solutions.
Melanie.
I would agree with what other people have said so far that homeless folks are in those conditions, sometimes by choice, but the majority of the time is because of conditions or situations that were out of their control. People who are in homeless situations, because again, and the reason I want to talk about this is because we, we tend to misattribute homelessness to personal moral failings, when in reality it is a society issue. Everyone contributes to this problem and this is everybody's problem. When we think about the people who are homeless, these are folks who have a mental disability. Folks who are had to escape domestic violence because they decided that have to choose between the streets or becoming another, another percentage or another number. These are also folks who just, they were doing well in life and then there, there wasn't some sort of debt or a medical emergency that they couldn't afford. And so then we need to bring compassion to city council when we talk about these issues and know that these are neighbors. These are people in our communities. Of course, Lenexa cannot bear the whole burden, but we want Lenexa to partner up with other cities in the community so that we can lead by example to the rest of the nation. We have the capacity to do that. I would love for us to, well, homeless shelters are a great start, but they do not eradicate the problem by any means. I would like to see cities across the metro area embrace a solution to support $15 minimum wage. I would also appreciate adding additional funding for social services so that people can stay in their homes and also find affordable housing solutions without state interference.
Hafin. You'll need to unmute yourself.
The homeless. My commuting still?
No, I can hear you fine now. Thank you.
Yes, the homeless is a really, it's a serious issue that the city needs to solve. And Lenexa is trying, but what I may suggest is possibly trying to investors who can invest and get a tax break so that they can have affordable houses. That these homeless people or people need homes that they can afford. You have some investors who can invest in our town and have those homes where these people can stay. Another point is possibly relax some zoning so that at least we can accommodate these people. And the, the last one is just the ability to get more funding so that the homeless can find cheaper houses.
Next question. Over the last year, we saw issues of systemic racism come to the forefront of our local, state and national discourse. How do you intend to tackle systemic racism in Lenexa? Please specifically address issues related to city policing practices and housing. Craig, you're up first.
You know, I think that's probably a tough, tough issue. Systemic racism, policing, housing, they all have their, the roots in, I think, embedded in, in the community. I don't really believe Lenexa has systemic issues. I think we have one-off issues with different departments. The perception, for example, of the police force. I went through Lenexa's Citizen Police Academy a number of years ago. That was pretty insightful. I think the ride alongs that we did and, and the way that we learned that the police interact with, with our citizens was informative. I came away from that experience believing that our police force was well-trained and well-equipped. Now, admittedly, that's some years ago. I've not seen anything lately that would cause me to change my opinion of our, our police force. I think the media does a pretty good job of coloring sometimes situations that may be national and they attribute them down to perhaps the local level. But I think as a city, we need to be aware and study and react when issues such as that come up and are brought to the city's attention.
Melanie.
This is an issue that I'm very passionate about. To say that there is no racism or systemic racism in Lenexa is a dangerous path. Because there are people who don't agree with that. It only takes a conversation with friends and neighbors who are people of color, who will tell you that for the wrong reasons, they've been stopped by the police or that they felt like they've been targeted. Or that they were followed in stores or, you know, that they're not getting the same treatment that their coworkers are getting. It also takes one look through the neighborhood app or the next door app, whichever one you use. People go in there and complain about the ways that they do not feel safe or supported in this city. So the, I think that the first thing that we need to do in city council in order to have these conversations about race is that we need to lose our fear of talking about race. Because this is something that came up in conversation last, last year during the height of the protests in the summer. People were afraid to talk about it or to, and, and that's fine. The thing about talking about race and racism and systemic oppression is that we are going to make mistakes in the process. What the is that we must listen. There were members of color available and representing the community at the city council meeting last, last summer. And their voices went unheard. So to say that the NDO was appropriate, it wasn't. There were members who were not happy with it. And I feel that it needs more specific steps. I've had to work writing statements of equity and solidarity for some of the companies that I work for. And I can tell you from my own personal experience that it fell short.
Scott.
Well, I love Lenexa. I've been a homeowner here for 15 years. I've had a lot of neighbors move in and move out. And people, like I said before, we have a very multicultural neighborhood. And I really don't see, I don't see an issue with systemic racism in Lenexa, Kansas. I believe there are probably other states that have that issue. There are racists everywhere, people who are just ignorant and blind and they have their beliefs. But is it a systemic problem? I don't believe it is, but I could be wrong, but I'm still researching it. I have been trying to work with Chief Lehman with Lenex Police Department to do some ride-alongs and talk to officers about the issues they're having, what they're seeing. And we're organizing that right now, but so I can learn more about from their perspective as far as policing Lenexa, what issues they're running into with day and night. And, and also talking to citizens, you know, and I've been talking to my neighbors and they're very happy here. As far as businesses having issues or, you know, with not providing opportunities to people of color or different sexual orientations. And that's, you know, that's on the business and you have to take that up legally. But as far as the schools and the other opportunities here, I don't see it as being a systemic issue as much as just it's an American cultural issue. And I think all countries have racism and we're no different from that. It's been around forever and it's going to be around for a long time until we're all one color, basically. I think eventually we're a large melting pot and eventually everybody's going to be, we're all going to look the same in about 500 years. So, but no, I don't see that we have any issues. I love Lenexa. As far as systemic racism, I just don't see it being a, an issue that we have to concern ourselves with as much as what some of the panelists have said. Address the issues upfront if we see them, you know, hit it head on and hard so that we can shut it down. But that needs to be brought to our attention by citizens, the residents of Lenexa. And if we see something, we did also discuss that ourselves, so.
Hafin.
Oh, well, I mean, it's, it's really hard to say that does not exist. Sometimes you have to leave it to be able to, to really talk about or understand it. I have written much about race and I understand sometimes you can be a victim, but I've transcended that. And I think race is in much is a product of unfounded fears, ignorance and unfounded fears. So if the council or most people learn about other cultures, understand we have tribalism, we have all these, but to transcend that so that you can see a person as a person. I think we can grow as a city if we transcend that. And I think I can add my voice to the council so that they can understand diversity from the point of view of someone who has lived it.
Corey.
I, I can appreciate what Hafin was saying. I, you know, I, of course, I'm going to be biased. I've been, I've been integrated as much as a resident could be for the past three years with the public safety apparatus of Lenexa. And we have some of the finest individuals in our public safety. And that reaches into Parks and Rec and municipal services as well. But our police officers are some of the finest in the country. Yes, we need to have standardized practices that are being benchmarked against national practices and making sure that we've got a, an audit on our police force. And, and there's mechanisms to do that and I would support that. We also have, we, we're learning all the time more about wellness and how that plays into, into discrimination and, and, and what people are going through and what, what our public safety officers and, and police officers are going through as well. It's an investment. We have to invest in training. We have to invest in good people. And that's what makes a difference. I, I can tell you 23 years in the Navy and, and combat training, you can train, train, train. There's a difference between having someone trained and someone proficient to do the job. And you can give someone the training, all, all the training you want, but if you don't hire good people, good Americans, you're not going to get the result you want. And that's, that's the focus on Lenexa is hiring good people and having those conversations. All of that stuff is important, but it starts with having good people, being able to recruit and retain good people. Well, Lenexa does the right thing. I, I, I'm not a person of color. I've not lived that experience to say being discriminated against as a minority. But there's other discrimination, right? I know injustices exist every day.
Taking a bit of a left turn here onto a different topic. There was a question that came through that I think is more detailed than the one I was going to ask. So taking our first audience question. There is significant growth in the Lenexa city center area, but our infrastructure, roads, waste management, water, et cetera, doesn't seem to be keeping up. How are the businesses and building owners going to contribute to sheltering this expense? Or are the homeowners going to bear the burden? The original question was how will you handle rezoning issues that come before the council to balance residents and business interests? And we will start with Melanie.
This is an issue that I would like to do more research on, but I definitely agree with the perception that Lenexans have that there is shiny toys and wonderful development happening in the center of Lenexa. And then the outskirts are kind of left to feel neglected. I think that when it comes to transportation issues and development, infrastructure, we really do need to attend to those. Lenexa does a great job of these, but I can speak for every resident on that issue. I know that in some of the conversations that I've had with constituents, they'll say that it's not the same all across. When looking at the capital improvement program, however, like the nice thing to see is that there was a significant portion, if not the most portion of money allocated for maintaining our infrastructure and our highways and our roads. So that is always a good thing to, to look into.
Scott.
Thank you. And this is a good question because this is one that residents have spoken to me about as well. And it's a question that's come up with the east-west divide of 435 and with all the new infrastructure that's being built to the west of 435. And residents are concerned on the east side of 435, like such as Ward 4, that it's being left behind a little bit. And one of the concerns that's been brought to me by several residents is the swimming pools, which is some sort of an odd thing. The new aquatic center that's been built is beautiful and our kids go there for swimming lessons and it's, it's just wonderful, gorgeous. But our swimming pools here, residents are concerned about the being maintained properly. Could they be improved? And they're afraid, are they going to go away? So that's sort of an endemic problem that goes kind of across the board. But I, I agree with the other panelists that the, our infrastructure, for the most part, is actually maintained very well on Lenexa. I've lived in Missouri and it was not. And so I believe we're doing a good job. There's always ways for improvement. When it comes to flooding issues, our waterways, our sewer drains, everything needs to be maintained and kept clean so that water is equitably distributed, pushed down, so it's not bunching up in one spot. So infrastructure is important and I'd like to see just Lenexa continue but improve on the work we've already been doing. But again, not ignore east of 435. You know, everything out west of 435 is beautiful. I'm happy for it and it's, you know, the houses are wonderful, the new facilities are great. It's really a good look for Lenexa, but we have to distribute the taxes that are appropriated equitably to ensure that both sides of the fence are taken care of. both sides of the fence are taken care of because Lenex is a wonderful place to move and live. And it's what attracted people to live here in the beginning and that's why it's grown so much that we're expanding past four thirty-five. So. How do I feel about that?
You'll need to unmute.
Okay, am I back?
You are.
Okay, neighborhoods are very, sometimes like the four thirty-five divide, whereby we want to modernize the other part of the city. There are people who live on this other side that feel they, they like their neighborhood, but they like, they, they not like the developments that are coming. So I personally want Lenexa to develop and attract all the people who want to live in Lenexa because it's a very developing town. Everybody wants to be in a developed place. Yet we want to renovate the old areas like Old Town Hall and all Lenexa so that people can keep their memories because the future generation would still like to see their old Lenexa. And if there's a way the city can allocate money to kind of redevelop those old areas so that at least they can maintain. Yeah, because like even in Europe, they still have maintained their old buildings that the future generation can come and still see that this was their old Lenexa. So as much as I believe that we want to modernize the other part of four thirty-five, I think we should still improve the other side that's left behind.
Craig?
I don't subscribe to the idea that, that Lenex is divided. I think we've done a good job all over the city over the years. And if you start looking at projects on the east side of four thirty-five, you can point to the planned improvements at Indian Trails Pool and the planned improvements at Ad Astra. And not too many years ago, we rebuilt the pool at, at Rock Creek. And now we're going to have a new community center, senior center in Old Town that'll enhance that area. We're doing pavement improvements. All of that development is brought along with it, some private commercial development like Sonoma Plaza. So I think things are going well. If we talk about how business is going to support the development, continuing growth, particularly with business and industry in Lenex is important. And that's primarily due to the difference in the way businesses are taxed versus residential property. Lenex was built many years ago when they built the industrial parks south of Ninety-Fifth. And back in those days, it was almost sixty percent of the property tax was carried by the business and forty was carried by residents. Today it's closer to fifty-fifty, but development and appropriate growth is, is going to be important in the future of Lenexa.
Great. Corey, bring it home.
All right. Thanks for the question. It's a great one. I, there, I, I, like Craig, I don't buy into the four thirty-five divide. Most of this revolves around money spend on, on both sides. You know, I said last week, if you take a look at the capital improvement program, which not many residents do, but if you did and you added up both sides of four thirty-five, east and west, they, they come out relatively the same. Another thing is, an important point is development that's happening in the West. There's a saying, you, you can't build old, right? And, and development in the West, I'll, I'll tell you something, developers build streets. Lenexa doesn't pay for, taxpayers aren't paying for streets in the West. They're not paying for some of that infrastructure that a lot of people think they are. So when I talk to residents and kind of bring it back to, you know, what is in our CIP program and what developers pay for, it's a lot different. And people, that, that feeling dissipates quite a bit. I mean, I, I love to cheerlead for the new community center that we're going to build on the east side of four thirty-five. The trail system that's now connected. The municipal cert, do, do you realize we had our municipal services, men and women fixing snowplows in the snow because we couldn't fit their trucks in the municipal services building? Now that may not be a direct impact resident, but that is really good stuff that we did there. We've got the complete streets implementation now where we have the first ever cycling loop around the east side of Lenexa. You've got the core, the Quavira corridor study that's going to improve turn lanes, intersections and pedestrian crossings from Seventy-Fifth Street to Eighty-Seventh Street. Ninety-Fifth and Santa Fe just went in that, that in, that, you know, I'll tell you what it did was it allowed Ward Four residents really a greater access through that area and into those shops right there and alleviated the stormwater press issue that was there for, for a couple of years, really. Stormwater, I can go on and on with. Melanie's correct, about eighty percent of our budget goes to roads and stormwater. And if you look around the east side of Lenexa, there's nothing but stormwater projects going on because that's how aggressive we are in Lenexa. I voted for all of that.
Thank you, Corey.
Thank you.
What specific actions should your city take or continue to ensure affordable housing is available? Let's start with you, Corey. I'm going to give you time to breathe.
I was feeling good there. You know, we talk about affordable housing, real quick, affordable housing. Dave Ramsey will tell you, you can look it up and Google it. Affordable, affordable housing means that you don't have to spend more than thirty percent of your annual income on housing distribution. And you can run the numbers, but in Johnson County, if you take a medium and median income or you take the average income and you figure out affordable housing, it's a farce. There's no first year teacher in, in Johnson County that's probably going to afford a house in Johnson County. It's, it's the way it is. I, I don't know, you, you know, that's, that's a larger issue. But Lenexa has some of the most affordable housing in all of Johnson County. We've got neighborhoods with single-family housing, multifamily housing and senior living residential, all in the same neighborhood where it makes sense. We've built community around that and the trails and the parks and streamways. And that's what Lenexans tell us year over year in the surveys that they fill out is that's what they want. They want that connectedness. Now, there's other things that we can do. Might, you know, we can make sure that our ordinances are reviewed regularly and, and, and we do that. And, and allow setbacks and deviations to ordinances and we do that a lot. I, I'll tell you, my favorite piece of property in Lenexa right now is just off of Seventy-Seven Street. It's east of Seventy-seventh to Quavira. It's about a little acre and a third. And we had a proposal to put some units there that was not your, it wasn't necessarily a traditional apartment plex. It was kind of more like a large house and it was alternative. And it was a great idea and, and the deal fell through and I'm not sure why. But that's, those are great spaces and what I'm getting at is our infill projects all over the east part of, of Ward Three and Ward Four is those are going to be key to look at and, and what we can do and how do we can incentivize developers to maybe do something right.
Craig?
Well, Lenexa can't do it alone. I think the United Community Services this year just issued their Housing Task Force Report. And as, as Lenexa usually does when, when community reports come before them, they spend some time studying how that recommendations in that report align with current city ordinances, city policy, city practice, and see where that aligns with, with the community services. I think that's going to be a guideline. I think Lenex is going to take a leadership role in going forward with, with, with affordable housing. But it's not a, like, like homelessness, it's not an issue that Lenexa alone can solve.
Scott?
All good points. You know, I researched this issue and I alluded to before, I spoke with city manager Bucky Yokum. She's, you know, the city is already looking at adjusting some zoning requirements that would allow more affordable housing through rentals, renting out a room in your house, things like that. They're just looking for creative ways to make these things available. I had also spoken with Jerome Franks, he's the supervisor at the Housing Choice Program. He said that in October last year, they opened up their Housing Choice Voucher Program and it closed within thirty-eight minutes because they already had over a thousand people requesting assistance. And right now they're processing sixty-two vouchers, but there's not enough money in the HUD program. So that would be, you know, housing urban development. So it'd be something the city council could work with the state and try to request more funding from the federal government if we're actually seeing a need for it in Lenexa.
Hafin?
Ah, I can concur with what most have said. And the main thing the city can do is just work with other cities so that they can attract investors or developers who can come and try and construct houses that are affordable or at least they are within reach of the median income for most Lenexa residents. Another thing is to relax the zoning laws so that at least developers can construct some apartments or some living quarters in areas that are restricted. And give tax breaks to some investors, they can be from out of town, but if they come to Lenexa, you tell them possibly there's a percentage they can gain if they can construct apartments or some homes that are affordable to the low-income community.
Melanie?
I agree that Lenexa has some good examples of what affordable housing could look like. But yes, it is important that we also define what does affordable housing, what, what, what does it actually look like in numbers, right? Is it affordable housing for people who are making a hundred K a year? Or is it for people who are making, you know, straight out of college on a teacher's salary or, you know, even a therapist's salary? You know, is that like forty, forty-five K? Is that what we're talking about? Or even for folks who don't even have that much of a level of education and they have families? And maybe because of our minimum wage standards, we're, they're only making about maybe twenty thousand a year. So I think we need to start by addressing what affordable housing actually looks like, depending on those income brackets. And, and this kind of, this conversation kind of goes hand in hand with the conversation about homelessness. Because when we talk about how homelessness is a problem that is, can also be made by society, that exists in, when we look at the number of houses, for example, or living units that were created in the Kansas City area in twenty seventeen. Affordable housing, they built about sixty units that were considered affordable housing and as opposed to four thousand luxury units. So we need to look at the numbers. We are not, we don't have the, the numbers to meet the, the population and the demographics. But anyhow, I would love to see the city of Lenexa partner up with other cities in the metro area and in Kansas so that we can roll back this legislature, legislature overreach that doesn't allow cities to implement tools like affordable housing requirements that have worked in other places.
Thank you. Next question. Do you support a designated time for public comment at council meetings? Why or why not? And Hafin, we will start with you.
Yeah, can you ask the question again?
Absolutely. Do you support a designated time for public comment at council meetings? Why or why not?
I think I could not support that so that, because if a time is set for questions and answers, it will be able for especially the residents to ask questions with people or if the leaders are there so that they can be answered live or at a time that you can have your question answered. Instead of possibly waiting, you have a question and you wait for an answer at a particular different time.
Melanie?
Yes, I definitely support the Lenexa City Council, having a time for open comment. And fortunately, that is something that they do. And I would actually like to take the remaining time of this question to answer, why don't we actually have transparency? Or just my position on transparency in the city council, especially when it comes to live streaming our city council meetings? If, if there is a room for, for individuals to do public comment, we should also have the opportunity for others to also tune in and to listen to their city council people making major decisions on their, on their cities and on the city and their ways of living. This is something that the city of Lenexa doesn't currently have and I would like to support this change moving forward.
Craig?
Well, this is an interesting perspective, I think. I spent a little more than twenty years on the Shawnee Mission School Board. And through that period of time, we went from, we moved to video, video display, I guess, of our meetings. And we always had something called Open Forum at the beginning of a meeting, which was an opportunity for anyone to come before the school board and offer comments. That was, because some of the comments required some research, we were instructive, I think, at that time to, to tell the, the folks that they may or may not get an answer to a question that they asked at that time. And that's simply because research may have been required. As, as a board member, I didn't know all the details that the superintendent or the assistant for personnel would know. And so as a board member, I would not answer those since I didn't know the answer. But we would get back to the, the person soon thereafter and answer their questions. So I think it's a good idea. I think having a time for citizen input is helpful. It helps us understand what's going on in the community.
Corey?
Yes, we should have community input at the council meeting and it should be directly after the new business is completed and before staff inputs and council reports. It's what we currently do. It works good because we can get the business, the city complete and then hear residents. There are some things that can fit into that as well. You know, and I'll spend the rest of my time now talking about broadcasting that, that meeting in the larger venue, something that the council's been talking about and, and struggling with, to be honest with you, for the last couple of years. And I'm still kind of weighing the, the options. I wouldn't, I would love to see it get out in podcast form. I, I think there's some, you know, there's some considerations on how much it costs to have that set up. You'd be amazed and astonished at how much we pay to store police cam video and body cam video. We would have to store and set up the technology for this and it's not, it's not a huge deal to do. But to be real, we see around our city councils that look like a circus on TV. And it's ridiculous and people change when they're on video. Good people do stupid things on video and it's a concern. And you don't see that. You don't see those kinds of stories coming out of Lenexa. You don't see Lenexa in the news. There's no headlines, no one stealing signs. It's, you know, it's, we don't do that in Lenexa. Lenexa's city government works. And there's good reason why it does.
Scott?
Yes, I love this question. I, I work in technologies. This is right up my alley. And I was going to say originally if you called up on me after Melanie, I was going to say Melanie stole my thunder. But I think we all, we're kind of on the same page. I believe that we should be live streaming these events, the city council meetings, the planning commission meetings. I would, as to when residents can submit I would, as to when residents can submit comments, there needs to be a cutoff time so the panels, the committees have a chance to review the questions and formulate good answers. Cause you want good information being given back to the residents. Corporations do this now. They live, live stream meetings all the time. Large corporate meetings and they invite questions and usually have a Q and A at the end of the session. To address these things. Now, how the format would work for a council meeting or for a planning commission meeting might look a little bit differently. But I think it's absolutely, it would be a wonderful idea. I'd rather see it actually on a, on a public access channel or something on, on one of the, the telecommunications companies. TV provider systems or whatever, but just having a livestream is not expensive. We could certainly do that. And I think it would really be eye opening for the public to see how these things go. I love going to the planning commission meetings and city council meetings. When a new building's popping up, you have no idea. You drive by it down the street and you're like, what is that? You have no idea. But if you're attending the planning commission meetings or if you could just view it online, it's like better than going to the movies. You can actually find out what's happening. And if you have concerns about it, you can follow up with questions and, but that's a great technology we should be implementing. I don't believe that it's a cost back to the Lenexa can't afford. We could do it. So it's more transparency as some of the panelists have alluded to. But transparency and more involvement for the community. I like to see the community more involved in political structure here. Lenexa City Government does do a very good job and I think we need to sort of brag on that and show the, the residents that we do care, we're addressing issues and let them know what's happening in the future of Lenexa. And the only way they're going to know that is if they can either sit in on a meetings in physical form, which can be difficult, especially with this past year with never know if there's going to be another pandemic around the corner. You know, the way everything's reacted, but. Livestreaming would be great. Let everybody know what we're doing.
All right. Now for the zinger question, because as it turns out, government costs money. Tell us about your experience with managing a large budget. Melanie, we will start with you.
I will say that when it comes to managing a large budget, that is not something that I have much experience with. The, the work that I've done with handling budgets has been primarily with the business that I own. I own my own private practice and I would say that this is where most of my experience comes from. But the great thing about working in city council is that you work with the whole team. So while this may not be my area of expertise, what I will bring in to these conversations about managing the budget. Will be that I will always be willing to listen, to collaborate and to ask clarifying questions anytime that I may not understand how a process is done.
Thank you. Craig.
Well, I had a forty-seven year career with Terracan and twenty-seven of those years I was on their board of directors. We grew from a firm that probably did a million dollars with a business back in nineteen eighty. To now, I think probably close to a billion. We've had budgets every year that we've had to maintain. And the good part about that is that we had control over. The. Expenses and the, and the income. So we could plan a budget. For twenty years I was on the Shawnee Mission School Board and we didn't have quite as much control over that budget. It was still a pretty substantial budget. Total capital outlay and operations was, I think, probably in the neighborhood of five hundred million. We did a pretty good job, I think. Properly and appropriately managing those budgets.
Corey.
Oh. Budgets and government spending. I, I know quite a bit about government spending. Twenty-three years in the Navy. Was responsible for quite a bit of equipment and budgeting of taxpayers' money. And quite frankly, I've seen a lot of it wasted. It does take a lot of money to run a city like ours. It. Being, and of course I've sat on the budget for the last four years now. And seeing those line items and a budget like Lenexa's of a hundred and fifty-eight million dollars, there's a lot going on. And you want to make sure that that money is spent purposefully and, and going forward slowly. At least that's my, that's my philosophy. We've talked a little bit about CIP and that's important because I think that touches residents quite a bit, that capital improvement program. People need to know it shifts around because of where our resources are and what is in the budget. And if you make a change here, it causes reaction here and everything in between. And you know, everything between getting your roads done and saving that astrapool is more co responders for the police department. It's more development in the east side of Lenexa that needs it. It's, it's those kinds of, of. Of things that need to be done. So yes, listening is very important and understanding what's at stake as well.
Scott.
Budgeting. Well, I don't usually work with a budget except for at home. We, my wife and I maintain a very good budget. At work, my day job is a planning and design engineer for forecasting future growth of network in Kansas. I'm authorized to spend up to a hundred thousand dollars before I have to get assistance and the expectations on me are to keep costs down, use the most efficient. Way to provide services and without spending too much money, you know, keep everything cost effective without overspending and providing too much growth. And today I signed off on a project with approval. It was nine hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. It's one of the highest ones I've had to deal, but. I am entrusted with spending money. I know how to spend it and I'm very prudent. And as far as budgeting, that's not really an issue. Just, it's the taxpayers' dollars. We have to be careful with it. I don't believe that we, I don't believe government should be, you know. Expanding on pork projects or pet projects and projects that don't actually benefit the residents of Lenexa. If it's something, you know, it doesn't actually meet those requirements. That actually benefit everybody in Lenexa. I think that we have to be very careful about how we appropriate and use those funds. So. Just be careful with the money. It's the taxpayers' dollars. That's what it comes down to. We have to be careful with it and manage it.
And Hafin.
However, I am not much an expert in a large budget. I think the ability of a good budget manager is to. Get the qualified people or just listen to input from the qualified people in that area. I'm going to the council to be part of our team and I like to listen to as much from. All the qualified people in the department so that I make a very qualified decision. And listening to input from qualified people is, that's the ability of making somebody good because if you can listen. And get input from experienced people, then you can be a good manager. I go, I, I want to go in with my ears open and ability to learn. And get input so that we can control the money and the citizens can see that their money is well spent.
All right. That was the final question of the night. Thank you to the candidates for your time and your very thoughtful responses. I will now pass it back to our leaders, mainstream coalition for any final thoughts.
Thank you, Eileen, and let's give the candidates one minute each for a close. I think we have enough time for that. People are hanging on.
Perfect. And let's start with Melanie. We'll just go alphabetically again.
Well, thank you and thank you so much for hosting this forum tonight. It really was fun to share with everyone here and to learn from one another. I just want to say that what sets me apart from other candidates is that I'm bringing in very unique perspectives that most people don't. Lenexa has a significant population that is a minority. Where ten percent of Lenexans identify as non-white, but the city council is a hundred percent white. So they're clearly missing voices at the table. And so I want to come in and to have those voices being accounted for. And also I want to bring in my background as a cultural, or excuse me, as a, as a mental health professional. To bring in elements of trauma-informed care, empathic listening and cultural humility. Thank you.
Hafin.
I'd like to thank you for giving us a chance to air our input. I come to Lenexa. With the ability to, I came as an immigrant to the US just to get education. But I stayed to utilize it in the service for others. So I want to. See that Lenexa becomes a home and I want to provide a voice from all people in Lenexa regardless of gender, race, national origin, persuasion or socioeconomic level. And I want to help continue to develop. Lenexa through the culture, the arts, sports. And make it a welcoming community so that everybody will feel it's good to call it a home. And I want to ensure that Lenexa is a great place to live by being part of that. Place where everybody lives their Lenexa way. And finally, I like to continue to elevate Lenexa's visibility and activity locally and nationally and globally. For business and investment, since I come from another part of the world, I think I like to bring that to Lenexa so that everybody can feel comfortable. Calling Lenexa a place to visit. Thank you.
Scott.
What to say? Well, a lot of people don't know who I am. I was born in Houston, Texas, July sixteenth, nineteen seventy-one. So I have a big birthday milestone coming up this Friday. And I lived in Lenexa two thousand and six, been a homeowner here for fifteen years, been married for sixteen years. Two boys, four and six, Malcolm and Sebastian. Sebastian has epilepsy autism. He was the one that was banging the table earlier and disconnected me. I've worked in my same company for twenty-five years. I'm an engineer. I love Lenexa. I'm a volunteer, I've volunteered at many Lenexa festivals. I'm a baseball, T-ball, basketball coach with I-9 Sports. I'm very community involved. And I, I believe in civic involvement. I think everybody should try to get out and do something, whether you're ready for office or you're just volunteering. There's so many opportunities as a volunteer. What some of the panelists alluded to as far as race. It was interesting when I was in the Kansas Army National Guard, I was an M-1A1 combat tanker. And in the army, I think most military fields, you, you don't see color, you see, right? You don't see color, you see green. We're all the same. And if, if you started seeing differences, you're not going to get the mission accomplished. And that's what I feel about the community as well. We all just need to get along. I think we all do pretty well. I, I love my neighbors. They're wonderful people. So I would just close by saying that, you know, I hope I'm considered for this position, but you know, I'm really confident. We have Mr. Denny, Mr. Hofine. On for Ward four. I think they're awesome candidates. I've done research on both of them. I think we all are credible and, and to the future of Lenexa as far as city government, I have complete confidence we're going to be fine. Enjoy raising my family here and hopefully for a very long time and I hope that they raise their families here. So that's it.
Thank you.
On with Lenexa.com.
Craig.
Thank you. I've lived in Lenexa thirty, almost thirty-six years. Raised three daughters. I enjoy the city. I'm interested in giving back to the city that's treated me so well for those thirty-six years. I've served Lenexa and the greater community during that time, twenty years on the school board, twenty-five plus years on the park board. Volunteer committee chair for Vision twenty thirty for Lenexa's one hundredth anniversary. I've chaired the barbecue ambassadors. I've been chamber chair, LEDC chair, been on the Lakeview Village Board of Directors for twelve years. Just really like Lenexa and want to give back. And so I'd ask for your vote. And if you don't know me, look at CraigDennyForLenexa.com or CraigDennyForLenexa on Facebook. And thank you mainstream at all for hosting us.
And bringing us home again, Mr. Corey Hunt.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. It was, it's good to be here and trying to get the word out. You know, I, I retired from the Navy and came back home. Raised a son here in Shawnee Mission School District and my parents lived down the road on Sixty-Ninth and Culvera. I wanted, you know, I just had an emptiness after serving most of my life and decided to run for council four years ago. And, and I've, I've learned a tremendous amount. It's like a PhD in municipal services and economic development really is. And I think that I've been effective in helping Ward three residents. Solve issues and get some things done and help inform how the city progresses. And for that reason, you know, I'm drawn to the service side of, of the politics. And for that reason, I'm running for reelection and I, I hope that you will support me in my, my reelection campaign. You can find me at Corey Hunt, Lenexa Councilman, Ward three. My number's public. And of course I've, I've got an active city email, but you can catch me on CoreyHunt624@gmail.com. And appreciate the time and thank all the panelists.
All right. Thank you all for your time. Michael.
Thank you, Eileen, for moderating this evening and I want to give a big thanks to the candidates who hung in there through all the technical difficulties this evening. You gave us a lot to think about and appreciate you sharing your, your time and perspective with us this evening. I also want to make sure that I thank again the partners that made this forum possible. The League of Women Voters of Johnson County, ACLU of Kansas, Advocacy and Awareness Group of Johnson County. The Mid-America LGBT Chamber of Commerce and of course Mainstream Coalition. Both the league and mainstream will be posting a recording of this forum on Facebook and YouTube. So find it and please share them with your network of, network of voters. Just as a reminder, advanced voting by mail began today. Advanced voting in person begins on July twenty-fourth and July twenty-seventh is the last day to request a ballot before the August third primary election. Before you vote, please visit four one, vote four one one dot org or ksballet.org to read up on candidates' positions. Find your polling or drop-off location and make a plan to vote. Thank you again for joining us and have a wonderful evening. Thank you, Eileen, for moderating this evening and I want to give a big thanks to the candidates who hung in there through all the technical difficulties this evening. You gave us a lot to think about and appreciate you sharing your, your time and perspective with us this evening. I also want to make sure that I thank again the partners that made this forum possible. The League of Women Voters of Johnson County, ACLU of Kansas, Advocacy and Awareness Group of Johnson County. The Mid-America LGBT Chamber of Commerce and of course Mainstream Coalition. Both the league and mainstream will be posting a recording of this forum on Facebook and YouTube. So find it and please share them with your network of, network of voters. Just as a reminder, advanced voting by mail began today. Advanced voting in person begins on July twenty-fourth and July twenty-seventh is the last day to request a ballot before the August third primary election. Before you vote, please visit four one, vote four one one dot org or ksballet.org to read up on candidates' positions. Find your polling or drop-off location and make a plan to vote. Thank you again for joining us and have a wonderful evening.